All right, so I just have two items. The first item for my report is I'll turn it over to Mrs. Frye. We will talk about the senior class trip.
Well, who wants me to stand?
Run to center.
I can do that.
You gotta do better than this.
I don't think I can because they were cute and I'm not with them in high school. They were adorable, especially the ones who realize this is for cards, but we'll take money.
I like that.
I like that. I want them to know what they want us to do because I do not. I'm very excited to have one of these teachers, so that's amazing. So I'm here to present for the New York trip, which I'm very excited about as our seniors, because we haven't been able to do it since 2019. So we're very excited to be able to get back there. We have two separate trips that we plan for that day. One is Broadway and a musical. We eat at Ellen Studdardust Cafe or some kind of carrot cafe. We're able to walk around parts of Central Park before we do those things in the morning. And it's such a great cultural experience for our students who are musically inclined or even who are not to experience that aspect. And then the other part of it is more of a history lesson with students being able to go to the 9/11 museum. They go to take the ferry over to the Statue of Liberty and they walk down Wall Street from going from one together. So those are our two trips. As you can see how this was broken down, sorry if the copies were a little morky and lined them up from Excel, but we looked at three different places with R&amp;J being the one that we usually go with because they kind of bundle everything for us. We have three different shows that we're kind of looking into. I had the students voting on which ones they preferred based on which ones they want and based on cost, because they range from anywhere from the bus and the tickets being like a little more than 200 down to like 136. So I'm letting them make that sort of decision, what they want to see for that. So my average cost for the R&amp;J is 205 with everything. It could be more if they want to go larger, it can be less if they do not want to spend as much. So that's where that is. And as soon as you start to get away from bundling with elite inclined, you have to buy the tickets separately, which is a little bit more challenging to get group seats and your pay each separately which raises the cost. So that's what I have for each one of those. You can see I also have the itinerary for each one of them. This was from years past. I don't have anything nailed down quite yet because it depends on what time the show is. We've had two o'clock shows for matinees. We have one o'clock shows as well. But we have all of these laid out, how we're, what we're gonna do. We get home anywhere between 8:30 and 9 o'clock. We used to stop to eat on the way home, but quite frankly, by the time everything's done, it's just kind of one to come home and go to sleep. It's a long day. So anywhere from 8:00 to 9:00, we get back to Pope Hocken. We leave at 6:00 in the morning and it's due to school at 5:45. So it's before school starts. We get back after school starts on Wednesday. All right, and we choose a Wednesday. And we've decided to move it into April. We've done March before, but we've had snow and has canceled plans. So it's more in April where the weather's a little bit better for us and we try to maneuver around sports. So any questions that you all or anybody has for me in all of this?
How many did we vote?
I am hoping, as of right now, when I did the survey forum, it was 60 kids total filled it out. And I think it was kind of about, what do you think, 40, like kind of split between the two. So I'm hoping to kind of be able to filter some more in. And it's split really even too in terms of which side they want to go on. And I know with R&amp;J, they have smaller bus, so say there's less that go to the musical than go to the other one, we can get the smaller one. So I would drop the cost a little bit for that. I'm hoping more will go for that.
The only other thing that I'm gonna add real quick is two things. Since they're present tonight, I just wanna give a thank you to Mrs. Coots. Mr. Gears tasked her with helping serve as a volunteer coordinator, I guess it would be, tutoring. And so we're off on a good start. She graciously agreed. And so at the Bethel side, she's gonna start kind of helping with and coordinating volunteers to come in and tutor kids and help them out and build. So that's an awesome service experience.
He's generous, sees the brains on just reading.
His head's already big enough, don't make it. And the only other thing is I want to officially welcome Ms. Babzak onboard. Lindsay started yesterday, hit the ground running after school has already started. So I can't imagine everything that is hitting her. But I think the kids were excited to see her. They did a huge banner welcoming her there. And the reception from both students and staff yesterday was very positive. So welcome aboard. And that'll end my report.
All right, moving on. Any citizens or students wish to address the board pertaining to the agenda items? Seeing done, we will move into finance.
Yeah, go ahead. The only item on the finances to approve the contract between the school district and Pope Hocken Township Police Department for the police services they provide. It's gonna be a 5% increase over the past year's contract. Next for next meeting. Same hours?
Yes, we do about 10 hours a week, or between six to 10 hours where we pick them. I mean, what they've been doing is hitting Penburnville and the high school on a typical rotation. Then I'll also go over to Bethel and stop in there as well.
Bill, we'll move right into personnel. You wanna take care of that?
Yeah, this is for next. The first one's for next meeting. The second one we'll vote on and the rest are for next meeting. Oh no, the last one's for the bill on the night. First one's to approve the following resignations. Linda Hadgley for the purpose of retirement effective June 2nd, 2023. Erica Botman as a pool counselor at the junior senior high school effective November 6th, 2022. And Mitch Tracy as head of grounds effective, I guess retroactively, is 9:30, 2022. P, and this is to vote on, I moved it, we approved the employment of the following. Casey Sanders as a learning support teacher at a salary of 75, 502. Step 11M plus 15 effective on mutually agreed upon date. Kaylee Klausert as a music teacher at Bethel Elementary at a salary of 52, 143 effective on a mutually agreed upon date. And Caitlin Becker as part-time Title I paraprofessional at Bethel at a rate of 1350 per hour effective 10:05, 2022.
Any comments?
The only thing I will note is when the original agenda went out, Casey Sanders was listed as step 10. That was an error. It should have been, it used to have been the paperwork. It should have been step 11 and step 10 goes on there. So that's the only correction from the original.
Any other comments? Roll call?
Patrick?
Yes.
Feiler?
Yes.
Chris Miller?
Yes.
Bats?
Yes.
Coffin?
Yes.
Klopp?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
The next three are for the following meeting. The C's to approve the following mentors as listed. D's to approve supplemental contract for the winter coach position as listed there. And E is approve the following substitute staff for the remainder of the 22, 23 school year as listed. Should that be tonight?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make that last one. E, a motion that we approve the following substitute staff for the remainder of the 22, 23 school year as listed there.
Bob's second.
Any comments?
We got also the assistant basketball player.
That's for winter. So we should be awake.
We should be okay.
But if you wanna vote on it, that's fine.
No, no, we can, I just, yeah, don't wanna cut in anybody if we do.
Welcome?
Yes.
Feiler?
Yes.
Chris Miller?
Yes.
Bats?
Yes.
Coffin?
Yes.
Klopp?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
And A is 5.5 is approve the following volunteers for remainder of the 22, 23 school year as listed there.
Bob's second.
Any comments? Roll call?
Chris Miller?
Yes.
Bats?
Yes.
Coffin?
Yes.
Klopp?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Feiler?
Yes.
Moving on to policy, which I'm Mr. Coffin, can you take care of that please?
Sure, number seven, policy. Give a second reading and final approval of the following policy as listed. That's for next meeting.
Moving on to items report action.
A, approve revised 2022 board committee assignments I presented.
We'll move right into administrative reports. We'll go right down through our list.
Good evening. I've been able to join the RTII meetings that have been starting this last week, so it's been good for me to be able to get in at Bethel and kind of get a sense of how those meetings are being run, get a clear picture of how we've been operating in terms of what data we're collecting and how we're using it for instruction. And then I'll be working with this moment our reading specialists at PB and with Lindsay for holding our data meetings at PB on Thursday and Friday this week. So along with that, I was fortunate enough to cover a little bit of time there at Penburnville after Jenna left. So it was a good experience for me, got to work more closely with the PB staff there than I had been, sort of been in and out of buildings. So being there for that solid week was a good opportunity for me and I really enjoyed being with the staff. But it is nice to be able to hand over the building responsibility now. And I second what Dr. Next said. I actually heard the same phrasing that I seen Lindsay hit the ground running yesterday and today, so I know everybody there is excited. I'll be excited to work with them, so it's been good.
So if you need to stay standing, I just wanna recognize if you look under administrative reports, it does say Dr. Tim Matlock now, so he did successfully defend his dissertation two weeks ago, three weeks ago, but he's now considered a doctor.
Congrats. Thank you.
Congratulations. Mr. Gears?
So first and foremost, on the 23rd, we did have our grandparents' night. It was awesome to be able to do that event in person. We had over 300 people in attendance, very well received. It was very hard to find a parking spot. We utilized the church parking next door. As Tim said, he was with me today and he'll be with us again tomorrow to conduct our grade level data meetings where we're taking a look at all that initial testing that we do as kids start their beginning of the year and putting them in the correct intervention to make sure that they're, you know, making as much growth as possible. This Friday, we have our Race to Raise event. It's kind of our spin on that race for education that we did a number of years ago. So the PTO is running that. It's a fundraiser for our school. And we do have a date locked in. It would be Wednesday, November 2nd. Will be our haircut event at Bethel Elementary. We did that last year. We're gonna do it again this year. Local barber shop and a couple beauticians come in and give free haircuts to the kids of our community. Really excited about that.
Ms. Babzak?
Hi. I had a great first two days at Penburnville. I appreciate hearing that I hit the ground running. I had, it's not spinning as much as I thought, but it's pretty good. I felt such a warm welcome from all the staff. I spent most of my days, the past two days in the cafeteria, asking kids names and getting to know them. So it's been a really, really warm welcome and it has made me feel so good. I wanted to give a huge thank you to Michelle Bleacher and Tim for being in the building. I think their presence while I was in wait, even the past two days, has made for such a smooth transition for the staff and the students. And thank you also to the rest of the leadership team for all of your support and help and answering questions and answering emails. And I just appreciate all the support. So I'm looking forward to continuing my journey here. Thank you.
Mr. Ember?
Good evening, everyone. It's been phenomenal to see how supportive our kids have been of other kids. We've taken kind of that momentum and rolled into our Homecoming Spirit Week. It's been great to see the kids get off the bus, all dressed up in their spirit themes and see Mr. Lynch and I dressed up. Today was formal day. I had a bow tie on earlier. We were dressed as movie characters on Monday. So tomorrow is country or country club, so the kids are gonna be all dressed up for that. We have Color Wars Thursday and Friday is Blue and Gold. Since last we met, we have wrapped up our data meetings, Mr. Lynch and I. We've been able to help teachers drive instruction and build interventions to help support our kids. We have a phenomenal soccer team and that is going to be our Homecoming Friday. We have a pay burst Friday with all our sports events and we have our Homecoming Dance Saturday from 7:00 to 12:00. And the only signups to the dance have been great. We, so far, it looks like we're gonna have great participation. So very exciting weekend culminating and I've had rally Friday and all day events. So come out and join us and help support us. Thank you.
So I wanna know what movie star?
We all, Mr. Lynch and I and Mr. Leester all dressed up as Men in Black.
That's Chris Rock it.
The funniest part was, Mr. Lynch was clearly Men in Black, but one kid said I looked like Boss Baby, so.
Mr. Rush?
Hi, everyone. Couple things. Our first junior high dance a couple weeks ago was a great success. Our next one is Halloween Dance on Friday, October 28th, excuse me, from 7:00 to 9:30 PM. We have our pride points, kind of like the Topley tickets at the elementary level. And Cole Spencer, seventh grader, won the student of the month, the pride student of the month for earning the most pride points out of both seventh and eighth grades, so shout out to him. On Monday, we hosted the Plummer family, family within the district. They hid their son from their youngest daughter. He was coming back from active military duty. So they called me, they wanted to surprise her. So we were able to court meet an opportunity where she had course at the end of the day in front of lots of her friends. So around 2:00, they snuck into the office. She was in class. I walked them all down and just made an announcement, her up in class, like I was just about to make an announcement. And I said, oh, you know, we have a guest here, Mr. Leester, I would like to show, you know, and introduce that person. And he walks, she sprints down, then they're takes him out with a tap, a huge hug. People were crying and it was really a heartfelt and fun experience for everybody. We did get it on camera. They gave us permission to post that, so we will get that posted so you can kind of see that, that really fun experience. Last but not least, the building-wide pride challenge, looking at attendance, behavior and grades. Seventh grade is in first place out of all grades at the junior senior high. So they are trying to hold on strong to the end of the first marking period to earn that prize, whether it's a pizza party or ice cream. We let them, we let them win. So very busy at the junior high, but all great things.
Mr. Rush?
Good evening. Normally it's tough following like Leester, but that was a great story. I'll be able to talk about that. Now we'll move on to the first quarter. Been doing walkthroughs in the classrooms of our specialized teachers, just to really see them working with our students, seeing them work with the programs and just their instructional approach. Really wanna recognize Ms. Rebecca Deller. She is our life skills teacher at Penburnville Trail Elementary. Just seeing the way she engages and motivates your student, you know, energizes me. What's even more impressive is how those students are still involved in the school community. They participate in all the activities and they're certainly not hidden away anywhere. I also like to recognize Kirsten Edris, our coordinator of student and family services. She came in and she really, you know, hit the ground running is the phrase tonight. But she jumped right in, working with families, getting them hooked up with community and county resources. She actually put together a handbook, which we plan to present tonight at our community training, at community training, just community didn't show up. So we're gonna work on that for next month. I might pick Andrew Frank about making those connections. Where they wanna get that, we're gonna focus on specialized items and just really supporting families in their home. Lastly, I'd like to recognize Casey Sanders. Casey was the new hire that was approved tonight. She will be our K2 learning support teacher at the elementary level. She comes to us with years of experience and with that WELC certification that we actually spoke about last month, having the contract out. So she'll bring so much of these skills and expertise to the district that we'll definitely be able to capitalize on and most importantly, will benefit our students.
Mr. Rush?
Into the first quarter, we've been focusing a lot on document review and document compliance. So this month, I just wanted to point out this specialized staff has really taken the resources that we provided, use those to, to do a really great job working on their documents. We've also been focusing on bringing some of our students that are off campus right now back. We have three students right now who are working really, really hard to get back here and we're starting that transition process for them now. We also had the opportunity last week to go to the fellowship program. This was really a neat experience because we got to connect and get to know our PDE and patent team as well as network with a ton of other administration within the state. I also wanna give a staff recognition to our autistic support paraprofessionals. They, we have our new teacher starting next week for that classroom, but they have just done a really nice job jumping in and handling as much as they possibly could and really just advocating for students this whole school year and really pointing out any help that they've needed and just having such a positive outlook to, to help as many kids as they can.
Ms. Burger?
Hi, everybody. So I have four things I wanted to fill in on tonight. The first one is just our staffing situation. Fortunately, we still do have three open positions in the cafeterias. I've done a lot of interviewing since I got back in August and people are either getting jobs elsewhere before I can offer. When I offer, they decline either the pay hourly rate or there has been a couple that just because of gas prices aren't willing to travel. So I've been working each day in the cafeteria at the high school. It's been a great experience. Love being around the kids. Love being around my staff. Lots of learning for me. So just, if you know anyone, send them our way. We've been filling in with subs as we can, but every day we aren't able to fill all the spots. Despite, you know, the staffing issues, we are still moving forward with our local foods initiative. So I spoke with you guys, two school board meetings back, about the dirt to dinner distributors. So we were actually, I'm proud to say, the first recipient of their first delivery here at Pope Hocken. We've got two deliveries from them and then I continue to get local foods from some other different vendors. I've applied for the local food grant for this school year. I think we'll hear back towards the end of the year, maybe in January, to see whether or not we receive that. Monday, if you didn't know, started pre-breakfast for all the students in Pennsylvania. So that's something statewide that's kicked off and we've already, we communicated that obviously and immediately saw a jump in numbers. I wanna say we did over 400 breakfast district wide. So we're doing, you know, between 125, around 125 at each elementary and about 150 at the high school, junior senior high. So I'm expecting to see that continue to go up, so that's great news. And finally, next week, if you didn't know, is National School Lunch Week. So we are celebrating that with a coloring contest at the elementary schools. These kids just love these coloring contests. The theme is selected by some sort of state agency each year. So our theme this year is peace, love and school lunch. So if you're walking to the elementary cafeterias, they are just plastered with peace signs and it's colored and I just love it. We will be selecting a winner in each grade next week and they'll get a prize and we like to display their pictures on the plastering TVs in the cafeterias with their coloring, you know, massive piece. So kids, you're in for that. Thank you.
Mr. Frye? We have some prep for homecoming that we would like to get done. We're in the rain, but that's really close to our schedule. Radios between Matt and myself next weekend. We've been working on a radio system that hasn't been fully operational, so we took that and hopefully next Monday, we have a radio program and if we utilize throughout the district properly. The Penburne elevator, we had a lot of work done with the elevator and had some issues immediately afterwards. That I'll take care of. Now we wanna work on putting a soap pump in that elevator because there's never had one there and the issue was caused because of not having one there. So a lot of water comes in there from the ground and we wanna make sure we can get that as quick as possible. So it's another project I need to learn myself and Carl to work on, so that's it. You ready to save the best for last?
Oh, sure. Shortest for last, cause I already. Good evening, everyone. To go with the theme of hitting the ground running, Lindsay, yesterday impressed me. Had a student walk into her office. She already knew the student's name. I couldn't do that, but very impressive, so welcome the board. Looking forward to working with you. For those who may not know, I had another daughter on September 12th, so welcomed her to the world. She's not letting me sleep a lot, but it's great. Fall play is starting up shortly. Actually, the kids have started already, so I had my first meeting with Mr. Moses today. They're doing Clue, which I actually saw at the Jet Topland Theater. It's a very fun show, so I'm looking forward to see what the kids do with it. That's gonna be November 18th and 19th, so get ready for that. And then I just wanna give a plug to Mrs. Engelberg, our director, I don't know her, tech teacher, I'll roll that. Her robot club, she actually had too much interest, so she split that into two different categories. There's some kids that are doing robots and the others are doing 3D printing and like architectural work. The kids that are doing 3D printing are designing right now a football stadium. It's neat to see them plug away at it. However, when they printed them, they're noticing they're a little out of whack. They need to learn the magic a little better, so, but they're getting there. And then her robot club, she actually had a group finish their robot already in two meeting times. So we get the playing field ready for them quick so we can start programming it. So it's, it'll be an interesting event. There's hockey pucks that can flip across the board, so with their robot. So very impressive. I'm hoping to see them actually get a little more coding in this year since they built the robot so fast, so it's been good. Thank you.
Can I make one more comment? I forgot something. I didn't report in that hour, I'm talking. Along with the same, on the same note of the staffing, I wanted to point out that the other departments, the studio, the administrators of the buildings have been pitching in. Whenever we need help, they have been super supportive, lots of teamwork in that aspect, willing to help out whenever we need, so I wanna make sure. Thank you.
All right. Does anybody have any old new business?
I just wanted to say congrats with the faculty change so far. I've honestly been working on my days. Do you like it?
Seven zero. Right?
No.
Yeah.
So it's pretty exciting.
And some of the interviews that I read online and in the paper today, actually, are students. If they were quoted correctly, the pride and teamwork that they're showing has been all, it's impressive.
How many seniors do we have on?
You know, how many seniors, Chris?
I wanna say two or three.
They're gonna be growing together, that's awesome.
That's awesome.
Any public comment? Seeing no public comment, we will be having an executive session after the meeting. For personnel items, the promotion will be there.
Off second.